I call the March 2nd, 2020 Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
I, Riffalo.
Here.
Raritan.
Here.
Crawford is absent. Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance from standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, tonight, as our city council convenes to fulfill our responsibility to make decisions on behalf of our community, we ask for your guiding hand that we may be wise in our policies, prudent in the stewardship of our taxpayers' funds, and a true listening ear to the needs of all of our citizens. The world today is seemingly in chaos, and we give thanks for the blessings of our Belvidere community. We are grateful to our public service partners, police, fire, public works, and educators. Their diligence and professionalism make our lives safer and easier. We ask that you watch over them as they watch over us. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. The way we're going to get this rolling tonight is Chief Woody is going to address the audience. Attorney Dreller is going to speak to the audience to explain exactly what public comment is and is not. And then we will start off. We had several folks that signed up to make comments, and we will announce your names as they came in to us, and you can come up to the podium and simply restate your name and tell us what you would like to tell us. So Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on behalf of all of the Belvidere Police Officers in the Belvidere Police Department, I'd like to thank all of those who have shown their support. You guys have no idea what it means for all of us at a time like this. I'd like to thank all of the aldermen who have reached out to gather more information and who have shared their experiences. And I'd like to thank everybody who's cared enough to get involved in the conversation. I want to begin by saying these allegations are not representative of the police department I know and am chief of. I look at all of my officers' performance since I've been chief, handling over eighty thousand calls for service and twice that in community contacts with only one formal complaint. My officers strive to provide service to our community in a manner that is professional and representative of the community they serve. They save countless lives and protect our community without hesitation. That doesn't mean we don't have work to do. Every day, we strive to get better. I would like to address the process of civil lawsuits in my understanding as a police officer. We all know anyone can file a lawsuit for any reason, and it's not a secret, especially by attorneys, that most of them get settled out of court for what's called nuisance value because the insurance company does a cost-benefit assessment and usually decides it's cheaper to pay a few thousand dollars than to pay for the attorney's fees to fight the case. This has never sat well with any police officer because frankly, we all want to see the case go to the end because we're confident ultimately that it'll be decided in our favor. However, we understand the business side of the process, but this is a perfect example of how officers get caught in the middle of that cost savings assessment and how the settlement can be used as the perception of guilt. Officer Davenport hasn't been named in a single lawsuit in the last seven years that he's been here. Officer Parker, uh, excuse me, over half of the monetary settlements for Officer Parker was from one case over fifteen years ago. But I want to take this opportunity to help some understand what it means to resist a police officer. Anytime an officer tells you that you're under arrest, any movement that can be interpreted as trying to keep that arrest from happening is legally considered resisting. That can mean tensing your arm, pulling away, turning your body, tucking your arms underneath your body, or simply running away. Resisting arrest statistics are not typically a statistic that the police department tracks because there isn't anything against department policy or state law to have more types of arrests than any other officer, but now that I'm aware of these statistics, it's something we'll monitor going forward. I think it's important for everyone to know that Officers Parker and Davenport haven't had a defendant found not guilty of resisting a police officer during the period in this story. Police officers don't have the luxury of knowing why somebody's resisting. Or what they'll do if that resistance is successful. All we know is that every second they don't comply, the situation gets more dangerous. Those who don't understand what we deal with would expect us to stand there and wait out the situation and trust the person who's not complying, while all of a sudden do the right thing without pulling out a weapon or trying to flee. As law enforcement officers, we are forced to react to the behavior. Failure to act can actually escalate a situation because it provides a suspect time to put together a strategy of attack or flight. We deal with situations that are dynamic, fluid, and potentially deadly. We use force in response to resistance with the goal of getting that person into handcuffs. All police officers have been trained, once you control their hands, the threat of danger is drastically decreased. I would like to address the use of force allegations levied against the Belvidere Police Department. When reviewing all of the police reports, watching the squad car videos, and based on conversations had with officers, it was clear, there was some level of force used with some of the people in the report. Now, when determining if force was appropriate, several factors have to be looked at. The severity of the crime, degree of resistance, potential for violence, presence of weapons, suspects' physical condition and abilities, and then the officer's physical condition and abilities. The centerpiece of the story was Taylor Anguiano. Taylor had suffered injuries from altercation with the Belvidere Police, and at the time, Taylor was wanted for aggravated battery to the elderly and home invasion. Taylor put those officers in a position to use force against him when he decided to run from them, punch an officer in the face, and spray two officers in the eyes with pepper spray, ultimately blinding both officers while he was still trying to escape. Legally, those officers would have been justified in using more force than what they did. All the people arrested in the report pled guilty to their charges, and none of them filed a complaint with the Belvidere Police Department. However, waiting for a citizen complaint doesn't always allow a department to assess their officer's performance efficiently. That's why, since I've been chief, our departments implemented an administrative review process for all of our use-of-force incidents, K-9 apprehensions, vehicle pursuits, and taser deployments. I believe this process has contributed to the reason why our departments only had one formal complaint in the last two years. However, review alone is not enough. Over those two years, I've had to address behavior and handout discipline. Discipline's one of the toughest and most important responsibilities that I have. It's because it reinforces expectations and provides accountability. Expectations and accountability are the cornerstone of a department's professionalism, and professionalism is what every member of our community deserves from all of its police officers. Last Monday night, community members came together to have an open and honest dialogue about how to make our police department and our city better. Community members expressed a need for all citizens to feel safe, which I can't agree with more. That feeling of trust and safety is the foundation of a community's relationship with its police department. Community members expressed a desire to see the implementation of body cams for our officers. This is a process I've begun to research. Finally, I encourage all of you to get involved with your police department by joining the Citizens Police Academy, Volunteers in Police Service, our Self-Defense Program, Use-of-Force Public Education Program, or our Neighborhood Watch Program. Our crime rate wouldn't be as low as it is without all of your help. Thank you for your time, and if anyone has any questions after this, my door is always open. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Attorney Dreller will now speak to all of us about what public comment is and is not. Attorney Dreller?
It is what it sounds like it is. Essentially, it's the citizen's ability to come before the corporate authorities, address grievances with corporate authorities, express concerns with corporate authorities, or if you wish, give them an attaboy and say thank you to the city council. But it is just that. It's your chance to comment to the city council. It's not a community debate or a town hall meeting, something that we had impromptu last week. It's your chance to speak to the city council. The city council is not under any obligation to answer questions, and in many cases, I'd probably advise them not to. That being said, obviously, everybody's got to be here what's going on, plus this is broadcast live over Channel 20 and later on YouTube, so when you do speak, you must come up to the podium and speak into the microphone up here, plus that's where Channel 13's microphone is as well. You should address your comments, please, to the city council, not to specific members in the audience, nor to specific members of the city council, but to the city council and the mayor. I encourage you, please, be civil. I mean, obviously, this is a topic that is passionate for everybody involved, but we all have the same end goal in mind, which is a safe community and professional police services, so please be civil. While talking, while people are talking, please be respectful if you're in the audience. Don't interrupt. Don't cheer. Don't jeer. I encourage you, please, be as respectful to them as you'd have them be to you. And finally, there's a lot of people here that wish to speak. I'm not sure how many. I'd ask you to try to please keep your comments as concise as possible. Obviously, state what you need to state or that you wish to state, but please try to be as concise as possible, and just as you want people in the audience to be respectful to you, please be respectful while making your comments as well.
Thank you, and once again, I want to welcome everybody that took the time to come out tonight. This is how community really works. I can't tell you how good it is, regardless of the topic, to see all the seats filled at a city council meeting. That's pretty unusual, so thanks again. We have a couple of folks that wanted to speak tonight that are not speaking to the item that Alderman Freeman asked to be put on the agenda. First, and I thought we'd get those out of the way. First, we have Andrew Race, who is here to sell his tickets. Andy, come on up.
Hi. I'm here on behalf of the Boone County Council on Aging. We're having a shoahay on Tuesday, April 7th, okay, from 5:00 to 7:00 at The Moose. It's a fundraiser for the Boone County Council on Aging. The tickets are fifteen dollars for adults. That's if you buy them beforehand. If you wait until the day of the event, the tickets will be sold for seventeen dollars, okay? Children are nine dollars, okay? I think many people have attended the event in the past, you know? It's a good event. It's a community event to support the Council on Aging and the good things that it does, okay? So I have tickets. If somebody wants a ticket, I can give you, I can sell you a ticket before I leave, but otherwise, April 7th, okay? Think about us, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Up next, we have County Board Member Jeff Carlisle, who is here to speak to us on how to share our budget on overtime.
Close.
Let you row down here.
Let me share some paperwork that way and that way. What this piece of paper is, it's Jeff Carlisle, 203 Secretariat's Way, Belvidere, Illinois. What this paper is, is some of the snippets that we use at the county board for figuring overtime and getting an idea of what's good within the overtime budget that we look at. We use a rule of thumb, one to ten percent of the hours, and we do that division against the overtime hours. On the back, there's a chart. If you flip the page, I just used the, an example, don't take this for random, but it's an example of the numbers of costs for the salaries for each department, and there were overtime salaries there, and I just divided that out. If you look at that, it says they're doing a good job, and that's great. But I think that may have administration salaries in it. I have to take a look at it a little further, but I wanted to give you an idea of what we do, and it does work, and if you're within that one to ten percent, that's great. We like living with that, and so I just wanted to share this information with you, give you some ideas of what we do, and that's all I like to do for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we do begin, one question was raised by a member of the media. Unlike Rockford, obviously, the city council's been through this before. City council members, Alderman Freeman's done this in the past, have spoken during public comment as constituent. We do not have a rule prohibiting that. Of course, you may do that. I would encourage you, however, not to get into a debate with members of the public as they're speaking. I would also encourage you to keep in mind that a few of the cases that are in question are still in litigation, and our insurance company is defending us on that, so we have to be mindful of comments that we make because of that litigation.
Okay. Let's get at it. First up, we have Mr. Antonio Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, please come forward. Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Antonio Sanchez. First of all, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to come for you guys and talk. I know last week it was kind of an impromptu meeting that we had, but when meetings like that and impromptu things come together, it's a sign that something needs to change. Something needs to happen. The cases that are being talked about, you know, the legal mumble jumble that everybody's saying, what it comes down to as a community, we need to come together and figure out this problem. It's not blue versus white. It's not cops versus community. I'm not here to say every cop needs to be fired. I'm not here to say that the two officers in question are horrible. I'm not here to say that. What I'm here to say is, as a group, we need to come together and figure this out, whether it's body cameras, and I know Chief Woody was looking into that, and he brought that up a little bit, whether it's a VIP, a victim impact panel with certain officers that do have those things lined up against them after everything's been said and done, and giving people the opportunity and the chance to voice their opinions and be safe. I think the reason why it's taken so long for this to come to light is, when you live in such a small community, it's hard to talk. You know everybody. Everybody knows everybody. Somebody's related to you, somebody's related to somebody in power, and that's a very intimidating factor. So it takes something like this to happen for everybody to be on the same page and really raise the awareness that something needs to be done. So I just hope that today, we really take into consideration everything that we're going to hear, and as a community, we can sit down and really hash this out and move forward so that Belvidere is a safe place for everybody. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Paul Ainley. Mr. Ainley? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. I'm Paul R. Ainley, A-I-N-L-E-Y. So it took me a while to get up here, right? I had received phone calls asking me to react as soon as this happened, and I'm glad I didn't. At that time, I was still angry. I was hurt. I couldn't believe that this was happening to me. You know, taxpayer, law-abiding citizen, you know, somebody who raised my family here on purpose because I wanted a safe community for my, for my family. Father's Day, 2018, I was woke out of bed by a pounding on my door, right? I opened up the door, seen an officer, and seen my grandson's father, who had just lost custody of him two weeks before that, standing in my lawn. I said, "What is he doing here?" The officer said, "We came to pick up Caden." And I said, "But wait." And then the officer interrupted me, and I did, I did as I was told. Four weeks before that by the police department. I said, "You need to get a search warrant. You need to get off my property." I wasn't being allowed to speak, right? It was my property, my house. I was waiting no more than forty-five seconds at that point, right? Running to the door, trying to figure out who's pounding on my door like that. Went to close my door, walked into my house, and an officer came in and grabbed me. I don't want to talk about what happened afterwards, right? I've got pictures, and you guys have probably all seen them. You know? I can't believe this is happening in our city, right? And I can't believe what I had to go through the last eighteen months, right? People covering for people, I mean, just, it was incredible. You know, if you just look at what the state was telling me, I couldn't use as evidence to prove myself innocent. It was ridiculous. We weren't even able to tell them why the police were there in the first place, right? I look at the resisting arrest, and, you know, I know we're not supposed to look at anybody in particular, but Chief Woody, I heard you say on television, if he just did what the officer asked him. I tried. I tried with everything I had to do what the officer was asking me to do, begging, screaming, "No." Finally, after three other officers jumped on me and everybody was trying to pull my arms behind my back, a woman police officer got out of her car, walked up and said, "Did you try more than one set of cuffs?" My blood pressure was 135 over 160. I almost stroked out. It's not anger, it's hurt, right? This is what I've worked to pay my taxes for. This is where I decided to buy my house. This is where I decided to raise my family and keep them safe, and I should have that right to do that. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Ryan Curry. Mr. Curry, you have the floor.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Please state your name for the record.
Ryan Curry. This is just to address support for our police department. Recently, our police department and city have been under attack by a partial lackluster story reported by Kristen Crowley in WRX News. They used snippets of a video on their news, yet posted the full videos on their website that much fewer people view. At this time, at a time where police are being ambushed and attacked every single day in our country, a news agency abused its power by curtailing stories without evidence other than the word of the people that were arrested and accusing these officers. Among those interviewed, in their story was a man who's been charged with beating another with a claw hammer, a man that was charged with sexual assault to a child, and another found guilty of manslaughter homicide. These are the voices that WRX used over the integrity of two K-9 officers that as a team last year alone were involved in thirty-nine building searches, two-hundred-and-twenty-one drug arrests, five search warrants, two-hundred-and-eighty-six vehicle sniffs, seven school searches, fifteen K-9 tracks, and three-hundred-and-sixty-three other K-9 contacts. What WRX also failed to educate the public on, in their riveting story, was that the state of Illinois combined obstruction and resisting under one statute. That elevates numbers. You can get charged with obstruction without ever touching the officer. They don't tell the people that for two reasons. One, maybe they didn't know. I don't believe that. Two, they do know, and it further doesn't, and it doesn't fit their anti-cop, pro-criminal agenda. If we as a people don't come together and hold news agencies like WRX accountable for their actions, then they'll continue to hurt good people and destroy innocent families through biased reporting. If you think it ends in Belvidere, it doesn't. This agency is already working on doing the same with a neighboring local police department. This empowers criminals, making our police officers' job just that much tougher. You'll hear every criminal that speaks say how much they support police officers in general, and in the same breath, say that it's, that this is the only common person feel, or, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. You'll hear every criminal that speaks say how much they support police officers in general, and that it's just a few bad apples. This is the only way to keep the common people from making feel that they're relevant in the conversation. Yet, in the same breath, they'll tell you how the mere action of them being asked to comply is unconstitutional. So which is it? You like police officers that force you to obey laws that you don't agree with, or you just don't have respect for authority in general? I'm confused. Belvidere police and Boone County deputies are stern but fair. If you're not breaking the law, then you have no reason not to comply. I'm blessed to have been born and raised in this city, when younger, had my fair share in encounters with police, and I showed respect and took responsibility for my actions. It's called being a responsible member of society. I'm thankful for these officers and these deputies, and thankful that I get to raise my family in such a safe city. Thank you.
Next up, we have Donna Donato, that wants to talk about the Idaho Public Library Open House. Donna? Is she not here? Is she out in the hall? Okay. So, next we have John Matchke. Is that right? John, please come up. Wants to talk to us about body cam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Repeat your name for the audience, please.
So my name's John Matchke. I spent twenty-five years on Madison Street here in Belvidere, so I felt like I should come tonight and share with you some research that I've done. So I'm not here to say that things did happen or that things didn't happen. That's not why I've come here at all. I've come here with good news, actually. I've done some research, and I recall last week, Mr. Mayor, that you quoted a number around six-hundred thousand dollars for the data storage of the body cameras.
That included, what, two or three years ago, when we looked at the cost of the cameras?
Sure.
Cost of one to two employees finding a repository where those records have to be kept in a kind of a rarefied situation, and just a ballpark estimate at that time is it could cost us up to six-hundred thousand dollars to do that. As I spoke to your friend earlier, the prices have come down. The first one, I believe, I'm not gonna cite the location, it is in the article, and I do have my sources. They purchased fifty body cameras at a cost of $67,500, and they paid $111,000 approximately for two years of cloud storage for these videos. Now, you add those two figures together, that's the cost of the cameras, plus cloud storage, two years, fifty cameras, I don't believe Belvedere has fifty officers, so that should cover everybody from, and that would be about $187,000, somewhere in there, $180,000 Looks like the more you buy, the cheaper they get. New Orleans Police Department purchased three-hundred-and-fifty cameras at a cost of $1.2 million. They agreed that most of that $1.2 million would actually go to the storage of the videos. However, that $1.2 million included five years of storage. It's getting cheaper. Now, I'd like to remind you that this article is published in 2017, I'm sorry, 2014, revised in 2017, and technology's only getting cheaper. I do believe that if the officers are up to the standards, which that I believe we all think they are, and that everything is cut and dry, everything's by the book, and everybody's following the rules, there should be no issue with these cameras. They will prove the officer's innocence, they may prove innocence of a civilian in a rare circumstance. I am proposing and advocating for body cameras. In the same meeting last week, we allocated $2 million to repave Logan Avenue next summer. $200,000 is ten percent of that, it shouldn't even take ten percent of that to purchase body cameras for the Belvedere Police Department. That is all I have to share with you guys tonight.
And the final person who has asked to speak this evening is Anna Rogers. Anna, come forward, please.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Please speak your name for the audience again.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address this issue that's on the board today. My name is Anna Rogers. I've lived in Belvedere for over twenty-two years now. I have a lot of things that I would like to say thank you to the police department for. I've noticed that the gang activity has really been toned down tremendously, and I'm grateful. I know both of the officers that are being called on to, to be investigated. And over the years, as I've gotten to know them, they're wonderful people, and you have to remember that these people put on those terrible uniforms, and now they have to put on the bulletproof vests on top of it in ninety-five degree weather, and I'm thankful that they have air conditioning in their cars. You know, these are people that are trained, they give their lives to watch our backs. We have to remember that, that it's our responsibility, as was addressed earlier, thankfully, that we have a choice, and we have to be respectful of the training and the knowledge that they put forth, the time and the effort that they put forth to take care of us. You know, you can instigate an argument easily, and the chief went over all of these things that can create a problem. Our officers are on attack these days, they have to watch over their shoulders, and every single movement can be a movement of aggression. And I'm not saying that, that abuse of power is not out there, because at the age of seventy, I've known a lot of police officers from the North Shore, I have them in the family, and I know, I know there's good ones and bad ones, and they have good days and bad days, too. And you have to take that into account. They put up with stuff that you would not be able to handle, they see things that they can't unsee. So I think we need to give them credit. Brandon Parker is an outstanding officer, he's a wonderful person, and, boy, I'm sure glad that I've got a bulldog on my side, you know, and when he goes after someone, he expects the respect that they deserve. And he asks you to do something, you do it. Why doubt it? Why think about it? Do it. Ryan Davenport waded into a cold pond with Officer McDermott to save a woman and her child. These are family people, they have babies at home, they have wives, they're, they're sons, daughters, cousins, friends. I support them, and I know that if Chief Woody thought there was a problem, he knows his officers, and I trust his judgment, and I'm thankful, because he, he's on the job, he's, he's doing it. And Kristen, in Channel thirteen, I know this is a story, but I have to acknowledge you, too, for bringing issues up that need to be addressed, although it may not have been handled the way everybody had wished it to be. I still am thankful for the news coverage that you do provide. I'm done, and thank you again. I appreciate our praise.
At this point, Alderman Freeman, who asked us to put this on the agenda, would like to share some comments with us. Please come forward.
Good evening. Marsha Freeman, Alderman currently of the Fifth Ward here in Belvedere. I asked for this to be put on the agenda, because I think it's a highly important topic for our community. I've listened to everybody's comments, and I prepared some remarks earlier that I would like to share. When I heard there was a scheduled segment on the Channel thirteen news investigating the Belvedere Police Department about misconduct, I was concerned for a couple reasons. First, because someone obviously found reason to investigate, and second, because I was only hearing about this on the day of the broadcast through an outside party. I have been aware for some time that many residents here have or have had issues with the police. It's a fairly small town, and people talk, word spreads. However, I had not been contacted by the media, nor had I been given a heads-up by the administration by a public discussion in an open meeting, a scheduled closed executive session, or a simple email or memo marked confidential or otherwise, who clearly knew this was coming. After watching the segment, to say I was disturbed would be an understatement. The mere fact that people are sustaining bodily injuries at the hands of those sworn to protect and serve them is unacceptable to me. I fully understand that tensions can run high during the commission of a traffic stop, and that people are often unaware of or ignorant to the rights of the police officers versus their own civil liberties. Having said that, I personally feel that physical violence against an offender is rarely, if ever, okay, and is only warranted under the most extreme circumstance. The taxpayers spend tens of thousands of dollars annually for police training, and I'm confident that our officers have received the proper training and tools that enable them to de-escalate these situations. Routine traffic stops should never have to end with lawsuits filed against the department. I, like every other person I know or have spoken to, have respect and admiration for the majority of our local police. No one has or would ever insinuate the entire force is bad. They perform duties that most of us could never aspire to, and perform vital duties that are critically essential for keeping us safe. We are all thankful for their service to our community. Believe me, I do wholeheartedly support our police force. That being said, I fully believe that as an elected city official, it is within the scope of our duties to police the police. When I see or hear something troubling to me, I call it out, and have spoken with Chief Woody, as well as the mayor, on multiple occasions, in an effort to have my concerns addressed. These concerns were mostly aimed at complaints of harassment and excessive traffic stops for minute driving offenses, which I feel have given Belvedere a negative reputation, and that I have zero doubt seriously impedes growth and development here. Other than a case involving Mr. Ainley, I had no idea that the things I saw on the newscast were occurring, and certainly not at the rate it alleges they are. It was extremely difficult to watch. I fully believe that the bulk of our police force are indeed upholding their oath to protect and serve the residents of Belvedere, and outstanding in performing their duties as officers of the law. However, like every workplace, there are bound to be a handful of bad actors. These bad actors are weeded out through the process of complaints to their superiors, no matter what the work environment, with the rightful expectation that appropriate disciplinary actions be taken. Disciplinary measures are important for a couple of reasons. One being it gives the other employees, or in the case of police officers, the public, reassurance that a chain of command exists. Another being it sends a clear signal that certain actions will not be tolerated without consequence. On the flip side, by failing to enact discipline, a clear signal is sent that these actions will indeed be tolerated, void of any consequence, and others are free to do the same. It also has a ripple effect throughout the workplace, and in this case, the community, that complaints are fruitless. I do not believe that every complaint is legit, and that all should be investigated, but when they start to stack up against a handful of officers, a reasonable person could not possibly begin to believe that every individual filing a complaint is lying or are somehow in cahoots. Now that I've spoken about complaints, and the importance of how they should be handled by good managers and administrators, I'll move to the lawsuits that complaints can and ultimately have led to. Multiple lawsuits against any one person or multiple people that have resulted in monetary payouts of any size are and should be intolerable, period. One, over the course of employment in any industry, let alone those charged with working in conjunction with the public and responsible for public welfare, in my opinion, deems any employee named more of a liability than asset. It is highly disappointing that as a city council, we have not been informed of any lawsuits against our police force, pending or paid, thereby eliminating our power of oversight. We have been elected by our constituents to use the authority they have vested in us to maintain their best interests. This includes not only doling out revenues and enacting ordinances, but using their money wisely. Paying monetary sums to people injured by police officers is in no way using taxpayer funds either appropriately or wisely. These payouts and their secrecy directly affects the functionality of our local government and should be further investigated. As alarmed as I was by the newscast, I am in some form grateful that this has come to light. If there is a problem, and by all outward appearances, there is, then it needs to be comprehensively addressed by the leaders within our community. It is my recommendation that we commission an unbiased outside entity to continue the investigation and get to the bottom of the allegations. At the very least, I would make a motion to equip our police officers with body cameras, and insist they be worn and turned on at all times by every officer while on duty. They not only protect the public, but the department as well. I'm not interested in hearing reasons why it can't be done, only what we need to do or cut to obtain them. Good or bad, our residents deserve answers and results. They have entrusted us to get them, so we can begin to move forward and ensure the safety of our citizens. Beating people in the streets or their front yards is uncivilized. Forcing people to plead guilty to charges they never should have incurred equates to nothing more than damage control by our state's attorney's office, and covering up for a few rogue officers isn't protecting or serving anyone. If people who have stories to tell or complaints they have failed to file for fear of retaliation, as I've been hearing, then those allegations need to be investigated and addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we conclude our public comment portion of the evening's festivities. Next, under approval of minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Belvedere City Council of February seventeenth, 2020, as presented. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item B. We'll leave this on the table for the time being, for the attorney to draft an ordinance for gas use tax. Did you want to take that, did you want, did you want to take it next Monday? Okay, we'll take it off the table next Monday.
We'll discuss it next Monday.
Okay, well then, I'll need a motion to take it off the table, so he can prepare it for next Monday.
No, we don't.
Okay, we'll just take it off the table, and he'll prepare it. Is that what you want to do? Okay, done. Under number ten, new business, we have ordinance four eighty-five H, a first reading, an ordinance amending Section ninety-eight twelve of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code. It's a Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under public hearing this evening, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, we have none. Under approval of expenditures, we have none this evening. Under committee reports, the minutes of city officers, under A, we have minutes of the committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second, please. By Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, minutes are approved unanimously. Under number nine, unfinished business, under A, we have an ordinance four-eighty-four H for a second reading. It's an ordinance amending Article Two Trees and Shrubs of Chapter one-eighteen Vegetation of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code. May have a motion to approve.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, second, please. By Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item B. We'll leave this on the table for the time being, for the attorney to draft an ordinance for gas use tax. Did you want to take that? Did you want, you want to take it next Monday? Okay, we'll take it off the table next Monday.
We'll discuss it next Monday.
Okay, well then, I'll need a motion to take it off the table, so he can prepare it for next Monday.
No, we don't.
Okay, we'll just take it off the table, and he'll prepare it. Is that what you want to do? Okay, done. Under number ten, new business, we have ordinance four-eighty-five H, a first reading, an ordinance amending Section ninety-eight twelve of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code. It's a silent reading. I just read it into the record for the folks at home. Yes, Alderman Burton.
I know it's silent, I just want to confirm that this will be on next Monday's committee agenda for further discussion.
Unless you want it to be.
I'd like it to be, please.
Under item B, we have Resolution twenty-one oh six dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the execution of a sub-grant agreement with the Region One Planning Council for census funding. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, may have, second, please. Alderman Porter, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to motions forwarded in committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Motions will be presented by Vice Chairman Brereton. Vice Chairman Brereton, you have the floor.
Thank you. A, motion to authorize the purchase of four Motorola Starcom twenty-one APX four-thousand-seven-eight-hundred megahertz model two portable radios at three-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents each, for a total cost of fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-three dollars and eighty cents, using funds budgeted in the equipment line item number zero-one-dash-five-dash-two-ten-dash-eighty-two-hundred for the purchase of portable radios.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to approve the proposal from C N H Builders Incorporated in the amount of twenty-two thousand three-hundred-twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents for remodel of main bathroom at Fire Station Number Two. The cost of this work will be paid for from Fire Department two percent fund in the amount of twelve thousand three-hundred-twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents, and capital fund in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
C, motion to approve the proposal from Advanced Heating and Air Incorporated in the amount of four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty dollars for remodeling the upstairs administration side of Fire Station One. The cost of this work will be paid for from Fire Building Repair Maintenance Line Item Number zero-one-dash-five-dash-two-twenty-dash-sixty-ten.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to the end of the evening's agenda. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned, and thanks again, ladies and gentlemen, this is appropriate and good conversation for the community to have this evening.